Firing squad?
We're gonna start.
They may not know that we are starting earlier than they remember.
Okay, we're going?
Yeah.
Okay, it is Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. We'll call a meeting to order.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and a fourth.
Okay. Joe, do you have any minutes or reports?
No.
Okay. Anything new? You guys? The only thing I want to invite you, remind you is at 1:00 on Sunday on the corner here of High and Monroe, we're gonna turn over all of our Toys for Tots to the Marine Corps League. So, we've got two ambulances filled from EMS. So Eric, he-
Got them filled up?
Yep.
Good deal.
And then we'll have some bicycles. Brian Voys' Motorcycle Club donated bicycles last year. They will be doing that again. And then we'll present all the boxes that we've got here, too. So there's gonna be a good load for the Toys for Tots Sunday. So if you guys want to come, you are welcome. Okay. So we're go all the other. Do we have any other finished business? No. New business. Budget discussion.
So I think we're starting with law enforcement fund today.
All right.
Page 102. I thought you had to be out of town. Just for us.
I was supposed to take Rachel from the doctor.
I know. Did you bring him an apple?
Yeah, sort of.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Push it, push it. That just doesn't work.
Changed my button.
You're sick, John. Okay.
Where did you find a yes button?
I hit the volume two and rebuilt it. I had to check on it.
No, who did that for you, really? Well, you weren't home for two weeks with COVID and stuff with the-
There was some issues.
He could only play board games for so long and she was probably whooping your butt, so we needed a break. All right.
Okay.
Do you guys have this sheet there that he gave out? I was gonna just kind of go down it.
I don't have, but I-
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah. Okay.
So we already adjusted sales tax to actual yesterday. Surplus property revenue was at 20. He wants it to go to 30. I don't have an issue with that. Do you guys have an issue with that?
We're at 64 right now.
It all depends on how many vehicles he sells. So the year before, we were at 27.
I can't remember how much. We just got like 6 grand for one of our new cars or something.
You guys go with 30?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'll have it carried over anyway from the extra this year, so.
He did court orders, so we got back in.
Yeah.
Federal prisoners. It's in 704. Going from 1,650,000 to 1,700,000? John, that one scares me a little. Have we signed the new agreement with them?
Well, we turned it in, so I think we asked for
Just history there. We haven't been at that point. If the rate changes, obviously, that would make a difference, but.
What's more, when we're all in hold of 50 prisoners, tomorrow we're holding 55. And the rate, the rate will change. We have not done a we haven't renegotiated contracts since we stopped here.
What are you asking for in what's gone in? I mean, in terms of the new number?
102. I think it was 102.
102.
They will give us 102. I think a realistic number is probably 92. I would like to say 96, but I think it's gonna be 92. So that's some of the other surrounding agencies have got 92. We're a little bit different since we're right here beside the federal courthouse. So they actually like bringing prisoners because they don't have to worry about them anymore. Bring them, so we can take care of them.
Is the math 92 times 55 times 365?
Yes.
Which is?
I have it.
About a million and six.
I wrote down all the different-
1846.
1846? And if there is a change, will it be effective 1-1 or later in?
As soon as we sign.
Oh, sorry.
No, as soon as we sign.
But we don't have anything to sign yet because we don't have anything back.
Right. We submitted to them. Now if they're located, we can make sure.
I'm good at the 1650 or 17. You can have 17. He had 1650.
Other way around. He wants 17.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have 1650.
What did the math come up to?
1846.
1846.
And so if we-
Do you have 55 in there every day or does it fluctuate?
It does fluctuate.
So.
Take it times 50.
Now I'm gonna whisper since you put this down.
That's a 10% reduction off of max.
1679.
Makes you feel good, doesn't it? How about 1675?
It's fine. It's just kind of an arbitrary number anyways.
So you're not gonna do 17 now?
We're 25,000 short of that. Or did we hear more argument from, or not argument, but lobbying?
Your sales tax was a little higher than the one you projected to, so you've made it up in that line.
I understand.
I'm gonna skip SRO for a minute just because that has to do with salary stuff. 911. So the sheriff proposes that we go instead of 7525 to he pays 2/3 and EMS pays a third.
I think he's worked it out with Eric, although Eric says he will do it because he's a team player and not so much because he wants to.
Well, I tried to do it in half and half and he wasn't going for that at all. But I mean, if you look at the numbers we're at right now, it's more feasible doing it that way.
Yeah.
We can sit there and argue all day on it. I can argue both sides of it and we dispatch our own people is my biggest argument. I think we talked with the sheriff, talked with Eric. Everybody seems to be like, we're fine with that. That's how we're gonna do it this year, but
Yeah.
we may change it back next year for some reason if we need to fill some holes on EMS side. But hopefully in a couple of years, we've got a 2911 communication system. That money's coming in however we figure that out, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am too.
So what line are we on now?
It is 58, no, 52811.
So on his sheet, though, is under the expenditures.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. 600, 701, 52811.
So I think we actually used to split it 50-50 at one point.
Right.
And then we went back there.
7525.
Our call volume was at 29,000 and theirs was at 12.
Well, I think the biggest thing, though, was we dispatch our own, so really they transfer the number over. So what are we getting for that amount of money? And it was money for EMS. So it's coming from the county one way or the other, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Find it.
Yep.
So that would change it from 313,174 to 278,376.
Yeah, it's a little different than what was that 276, but-
Yeah, I got the numbers. I guess a little bit wrong.
You need a wrong calculator with the bigger buttons.
So I'm gonna jump over to the EMS side and change that one as well while we're talking about it.
Yep.
Theirs will change from 104,392 to 139,189. Okay. This, 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 this one. So the next one is to decrease the education line. I think that's the one.
Yeah, that, so that on the expenditure side, 53265, that 15 grand was in there just to send people to LETI or to Lincoln University. ARPA is allowing to pay for scholarships for law enforcement academy, but not only do they pay for the the class itself, but it also plays for living expenses, so it'll pay for all our salaries, too. So we actually, I submitted a request to you guys for that. It was a little over $70,000 to send three people with ARPA money to get that done, so I no longer needed that 15,000 in that training line.
So really, John, you're not getting rid of that 15,000, though. You're dividing it up between training and the other three divisions.
And the other three divisions, yes.
So taking it out of here and adding it to 702, 3, and 4?
Yes.
It's 5,000 please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
John, did you want that in, I'm assuming meetings, travels, and dues in the other three departments?
I'm sorry. Yes. I should have put that on there and I didn't. When I write this stuff up, I try to make it in there to make it really easy to follow. Sometimes when I go over it so much in my head, though, when I'm looking at it, it makes perfect sense.
Okay, so that's that and that. The other items are salaries, so do you want to do like we have been doing and leave all the salary stuff to the end?
Well, that's what we've been doing. Did you have to leave?
No. I rescheduled.
Okay. Are we gonna do that later this morning?
I hope so. Hopefully, we're gonna get through the rest of this book and then we're gonna start with new employees first and then do actual salary adjustments.
Okay.
Okay.
I just, that way sheriff's here when we wanna either cut it or give it to them, argue it, kick, scream.
I say we let that button make the decision.
Change those buttons.
So.
I say we get them both up here and then we kind of flip them around and you come up and pick one.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Oh, this one's taller.
I'm telling, I don't have two of those no buttons. You don't know.
Okay.
Okay, so after his budget on page 109 is his portion of the training fund. Again, this is an out account. He gets some reimbursement from the state for post certification and then a fee as well from the courts that pay for a little bit of training. And then he also has the Sheriff for Evolving Fund on page 110. That's his CCW permits that he can use to pay for anything related to CCW. And in there as well, you will see his MOU. He pays out of CCW for one and a half people.
I'm gonna go back to the training. So transferring those to 7, 2, 3, and 4, 0, 2, 3, and 4. I mean, it's still an expenditure, though.
Yes.
But then we're gonna just have the revenue from ARPA come in and it goes to those accounts or how does that?
No, so he had 15,000 in there for that and he just reallocated it to training in the other departments. He didn't really save anything there. He just shifted.
He's actually gonna spend some more money, but the more money that he's spending is ARPA money.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, think of it this way.
It's gonna be in there, in the revenue at some point.
Well, hopefully that one would get spent directly out of ARPA if it was approved, but it hasn't been approved yet.
I mean, this is a non-ARPA budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
There is this budget and then there's the ARPA budget.
And the 5,000 for each division, so if I put the money for in 2865 or whatever that is for just for LETI, then that's all I can spend it for. By taking that 5,000 and putting them in the division, that means I can use that for training for anybody, for my civilians also, and jailers.
How does that reduce expenditures?
It doesn't.
It's not at all?
No.
It's just moving it from one line to a different one, three different lines.
Yeah, there was no savings in that one.
Okay, so I'm looking at these, the budget changes, stuff on top. I thought it was changing your budget. And it's really not.
Well, he showed it in two places, so he showed saving the 15 here, but then he spent the 15 here.
Oh, okay, kind of like the SRO half the money's coming in. Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that part. I was just up on the top.
You had me going for a second, so I haven't had enough coffee yet.
Sorry, it's early. All right. Your witness.
You guys have anything else with the sheriff's fund?
Nope, thank you, though.
So next is emergency services sales tax. This one has the other side of the 911, so I did update that. This has all EMS's capital, which we can talk about now or talk about later.
And again, it could be just a placeholder now and you guys decide when it comes time, you know, put them to bid it out or decide to start purchasing things.
So we did update the sales tax income in here. I also updated the transfer to accommodate the 60% of that increased sales tax number. So we've seen a few changes as we've made them prior to that have affected this fund.
All the half cents are the same dollars and cents?
Yes, no cents.
But we did, like in capital outlay, you've got ambulance. We're gonna need to change that number.
He's saying about 780?
So, yes, he's saying that one is 780.
Yeah, so I mean, that-
I think it depends on which ones we decide to go with. He's probably, I think the number he's got in there is kind of a worst-case scenario. If we decide to go with the, is it type 3 or type 1?
1.
If we decide to go to type 1, it's gonna be more.
Well, I think that might be.
I think the 780 is worth it.
Got one or more ones in there.
Right. That's the type 1s, but if we decide to go to type 3, they were less.
Three, yeah. We've been buying threes.
So we can-
Yeah, and we've got a little-
And I'd rather do it this way.
I would, too. We got some cushion there. And is there, is there some value of the ones that we'll be getting rid of?
There probably is a little bit.
And I'm not, there's gonna give us a little cushion there, too, perhaps, I guess.
So we had-
Yeah, we should get some back for surplus, but we usually don't get much.
Yeah, so the last one we sold, we got about 16,000, I think.
Right.
So a little bit of savings, not-
Well, that was a damaged one, wasn't it? Wasn't that a?
No, I don't think. We don't get much for them. By the time they get them, they got, you know, a couple hundred thousand miles on them and they're carrying around a big load, so they just, they don't carry a lot of value.
And he did say with the new ones, there's the possibility of the remounts, which we've done before.
Well, we should be able to remount those.
I mean, we're not asking for three more, three additional ambulances. We're asking to replace three existing with three new.
Yeah.
So the three existing are gonna generate some dollars.
Yes.
Not, maybe not many, but that's just a little more cushion.
Yeah, I think we might have a couple of them or that have some issues and so I just don't see them bringing a whole lot. But yeah, we will certainly get something for them.
I can send you that list before.
There might be some, might be some deer campers that want a RV there, you know?
Well, put a cooler in there and you can hang your gear in there and insulate it. They're just, they're big and bulky, too. They're not like good work trucks. And I mean, because we talked about using them for either maintenance or public works or something like that. They're just-
Do you guys want to- Do you guys want to talk about, he had a few other changes to his capital list as well. I don't think-
I think the bottom number is where I'm just more concerned about is what he's gonna have and because this list changes throughout the year. Sometimes, yes, other things become a higher priority. And when you go through that money, then that's all you got.
Well, so he did have, wanted to change the amount that's in there for the critical care bags. Do you guys want me to update that number?
That should be 15,000?
Yeah, I think so.
What about his Tahoe?
And that one wasn't in here originally because it was not in his original request, so would you like me to add that one as well?
I think we should start with everything and then if we had carving, we're carving off of the master list of everything.
I think he had, his bottom number came down to 979,334.
Yes.
I had 331.
I've got 334.
My handwriting might just be bad.
I've got 334.
I'll take four.
I write my numbers in cursive sometime. They're hard to read.
No, I think he was saying the Tahoe, we wouldn't receive until 2023, but-
979,334 is the 199,334 in capital improvement and 780,000 in ambulances.
Okay.
Is there anything else in there you want to talk about?
I guess I'm just, I would be curious. When we throw all of these in here, the, what's the difference between cash forward and transfers out? Is that, or the, I'm sorry, cash forward and contingency? Are we gonna be still on the plus side?
We are. 482,025.
To the plus?
Yes. That one is mainly because the transfer into his capital fund, we have kind of held back because he has good reserves in, are in his operating fund, good reserves in there that we're trying to spend down. But if he truly needed the difference in his operating fund to be transferred from here, that would not be the case.
Okay.
Which we'll go over that when we get to his fund there.
But we also, I think we're behind on an ambulance, at least one. So we have three.
We didn't purchase any this year.
So that's a, he was saying one per year, but I-
Well, I think after we get these three-
I think we're gonna have two per year that we're either buying or remounting to keep them in a good rotation.
That would be, it'd be like a seven-year life on an ambulance, wouldn't it? Do we have 14? Do we call that a full fleet?
But there's still a question of whether we need that many, too. I think Eric had mentioned, so I don't know.
I think with 14, we got three of them there kind of sitting reserve-wise that aren't really fired up every day.
I think at one point, we had quite a few reserves. I think we were up to five and I think five was too much, so I think he's trying to back, back.
We were also having a lot of problems with the diesel motors, too, and so we needed them. I mean, we had a lot of them with some high mileage and that just really needed to be reserved or that we leave sitting at football games or something.
I was gonna say, that's the ones that sit at football games and county fairs and so on.
But we also got all of those type, Tahos and stuff, too, to help with those calls, do some of those calls.
So this has nothing to do with our budget, but I was listening, I think it was to the Blair Oaks game and when the quarterback got hurt, it took well over 20 minutes for an ambulance to get there.
Well, one wasn't stationed there.
It wasn't stationed there, so I did not understand that. And that was even in the playoffs. And I thought that was a misrule that basically, you know, if they do take off with the injured player, you really don't get to start the game until you have another ambulance on site, so I was kind of curious about that.
Did you get a resolution as to what happened or what didn't happen?
I didn't get to ask anybody or anything. I just kind of remembered it now, so, but.
Do you guys have anything else with the sales tax portion? And we'll move to the operating EMS.
Yeah, keep us focused. We can bust this.
So Eric didn't really have any significant changes. We're kind of living within what we had to work with to begin with since he came in right as the budget was being prepared. I don't know if you guys have anything.
Once that dispatcher, that's gonna be part of the later conversation. I think it's the only thing, only note I have.
So I do have that one in here at the moment, so it was included in my budget, was adding one dispatcher, just so you have that in your radar.
This is not really on point with the budget, but on, and going forward, when January ends or February ends, or let's say the first quarter ends, because we're, of how we got these numbers and how we, everything, many things have changed over there, we ought to stay on top of this thing at least quarterly and maybe monthly in terms of how's it tracking.
Right. I think Eric's hoping that he's going to see some savings from what we have in here. I don't, I don't expect it to go the opposite direction unless something changes significantly. So he's hoping to kind of tighten up the budget a little and see a little savings from what we have in here.
Fuel went down two cents.
Thank you, Joe.
It only went up a dollar sixty in the last year, but I love that report. Fuel came down two cents in the last month.
So where is fuel on here, by the way?
It's got the 120,000.
120,000.
Yeah, and I was fine just leaving that alone because he had 100 and then on med supplies, there's a little difference on that, so if it comes down to it's a wash between those two.
So I want you guys to be aware, if I take out the transfer in, out the cash forward, and out the contingency, they have about a $2.1 million difference in their operating revenue and expenditures.
Not even counting capital.
Yes.
That's why, that's why Cap Region doesn't do it anymore.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
At that point, we're about a million.
So we are not currently transferring that much in. We are about a million dollars is what's in there this year to transfer in because they received quite a bit of CARES money for salaries and things, so we have, we have some reserves in there we're spending down. But I am concerned that you start adding an extra million they have to transfer over. We're gonna be in the red on the capital side and you're not gonna have as much to spend on ambulances and things like that.
We could get a false sense of security after CARES and after ARPA and then the gravy train stops.
Yes.
And we're stuck with our, our habits.
Yes. Yes. So I think you need to make sure that we're taking a good look at salaries and things and making sure in here we're, we're trying to limit that growth beyond what we can handle after CARES and ARPA.
I wonder what the industry standard is for a political subdivision having a ambulance service. They're not expected to be profitable, but how unprofitable should they be? How much subsidy should they receive from the taxpayers?
I don't know of very many that are owned, like owned by a county. Most of them are their own districts or they are private.
But still, the, those own, the districts are financed with a property tax.
Correct.
Is that property tax 30% of their revenue, 40%? I don't know.
I don't know either.
I think we had some of those statistics when we did go for this, the sales tax part of it. See if I can find some, but it again would be, what was that, 2,000?
Seven or nine.
Yeah.
A good one, just would be to pull the financial statement of the St. Charles District. It's a countywide, two and a half times bigger than us. They buy 13, 14 ambulances a year. And it's, it's a countywide property tax subsidized operation.
How am I correct?
They're, as I was saying, they got two and a half times as many people as we have. So I guess they'd have two and a half times as many.
Do they serve multiple hospitals too?
They sold, they serve St. Charles County. I mean, they cover the whole county.
So that's one thing I want you guys to be aware of.
Okay, that's a good point.
I didn't think we were that far off on that between the, I mean, cutting in, because I thought that fund was pretty healthy.
It is healthy at the, it is healthy at the moment. They have a, you know, we're projecting a one-point-six million dollar carry forward from the current year into next year. That helps.
But a lot of that's due to the cares.
A lot of that is due to cares.
And we didn't spend as much, we didn't buy as much this year, I don't think.
Well, that's the capital side of things. So you're seeing that.
You're talking about the operating side.
I'm talking, yes, directly about operating.
Okay, so with the cares money, we were, we added like ten people to cover stuff and...
That is one thing that Eric should have talked about and he did not. So we had ten positions that got added in with cares. I think they are retaining three of ten.
Okay, that's kinda where I was going with it. And to your also's point, at some point, those have to be gone. I mean, by attrition eventually.
Well, I guess, we could say they'll be gone when the China virus is gone. I don't know. I hear you though, yes. It, it was a temporary fix to a problem that needed addressing.
So we can either go forward with the budget the way it is this year, but, and then we need to keep this as a, we need, to sit down, this needs to be a year-long thing.
Well, I think that they have added stations, so they have to have the three to continue those stations. So if you want to close a station, I think the ones we added was the one in Wardsville. We have one at Lincoln, which hopefully if we build a new station would move. And the third one was where, County Park? No?
No, we've had County.
Is it down at Brazito?
No, we've had that too.
Or at County Park.
Was the one we built out.
That, well, Wardsville, we did a little work there.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't add an ambulance for that. We just moved it from their main station out to Wardsville. That's just where they're stationed. So instead of having four sitting here or four crews, we had three crews sitting here and one in.
I was not in that discussion, so I don't know that.
I think the only other one is that one we've got at Lincoln there on Leslie.
We built another station out that we took from a twelve-hour truck to a twenty-four-hour truck.
Those are fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, I was gonna say.
Because we had Regent West.
Isn't that the one we had a sewer issue with?
I don't know.
Or they had a sewer issue with?
I don't know. I get confused as to which one's which station.
I think there was more flushing after the people were there than prior to that and the septic reacted, or didn't. Okay.
So if you guys want more information about that, we probably need to bring in.
Eric?
Eric, and let him talk about it because, yes, my understanding was of the ten, we have removed seven, but we want.
Did we ever get to ten?
No.
We never filled ten. We never filled ten.
We, we had so much turnover that.
So, yes, we, the quarterly review of that would be very pretty.
You guys got other things in here?
Yeah, I'm gonna dig deeper into that one later on. I don't, let's get through this part of it. And I think he's on the right track too, though. He said he thinks he can, you know, save some money, reduce some expenditures over the year, coming year. Because it seems to be going in the wrong direction.
It's all about that transfer, what it's taken to subsidize that enterprise fund.
Yeah.
I know, but we have to be able to buy ambulances and, and on the capital side. And at some point, that's gonna dwindle. And I don't think the price of those things are gonna go down at any point, so. Okay.
So let's look at page one nineteen. These are the capital requests that have come from different departments. We have had a few that have been requested in addition to this list. One was some security things at the health department that weren't listed on here. The possibility of replacing the postage machine. GIS should have had a plotter on the list. I missed that. That was my issue. And then I think parks, something about parking lot at parks that Eric brought up. Those were the additions that I saw. There were a few things to be removed as well. Maintenance took off their pickup truck and snow pusher. Public Works took off the replacement of the garage doors. Juvenile removed the garbage disposal because it was completed this year. We don't usually go through and approve them individually. We approve an amount in sales tax for capital improvements. So I don't know if you guys want to continue to do it that way, if you want individual items listed out that you want to approve now.
What's the bottom number on that that's gonna generate this year?
Um, let me pull up.
Because we try to save some of that for big projects, but we also have.
We will have two sales tax departments next year. You have about two-point-seven million in the current sales tax, the one we are currently collecting through the end of the year.
F?
I don't.
I think we're up to H. H, G or H?
G has two-point-seven and then H will be coming in.
Yeah. And then obviously, we're not carrying anything forward into H because it will not start collecting until January.
And that's about nine hundred to a million. That's probably a little bit more now.
Probably gonna be over a million.
I did update those. We picked up about twenty thousand dollars for their fifteen percent.
Just going right out of.
You guys tell me what you wanna do. I have put two-point-five-nine-five in capital improvements, a hundred and eighty thousand in computerization. And then we have some money that was set aside from the original G that has parked improvement money left. That's about seventy-six thousand dollars that we have to spend on parks. That's in the old. Again, like I said, we have not started collecting the new one. It will come in as the year goes on, but, and I would like to build up, we usually keep about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in contingency. So to kinda build that up the first year because of the lag in timing of collecting, but.
So from that list, you can pick and choose, but if you're not ready to, we'll just put a placeholder in there.
Well, and I think some of the building projects are the As and some of them are question marks. So we need to pick some and if you wanna move forward with an A project, maybe have Jessica do some bidding and get some pricing.
I think we can have a separate meeting on capital because we got a lot of stuff we gotta talk about there. Maybe not for this year, but that's coming up between the jail finishing off that part. I think we're gonna end up having to do something at the juvenile center. I don't know what direction they're headed for sure. That place is not up to date. The old jail.
The old jails bothers me the most.
Trying to get something for the courts. I know they've been wanting a bigger courtroom. Everybody wants more room. Kristen could probably fit a couple people up there in her office.
Yeah, let's fit a few more.
Just put them in the corner, right next to Jen.
Something to think about too is currently there's five million in next year's budget in capital in general fund. So in one-twenty-seven, we have an additional five set aside for capital projects. And I think if you added together the Bs and Cs on the list, we're probably fourteen million in capital projects. And that's an estimate.
So it's all about the master plan and what you guys, what direction you wanna take us into as far as what projects first?
And I think we need to start ticking off some of the items because the list is only growing. So we need to start.
Well, like on Carnegie, you've got basement remodel. We're doing that, the stair replacement. We, we had, we were going to do that. So, I mean, those, those are two givens.
Yeah. So I think those two will be encumbered before the end of the year and carried forward. So, yes.
So, yeah, and some of those desk and chairs.
Well, and I think you need to take a look at the entire list and make sure we do them in the right order. You don't want to spend a large chunk of money doing something that if you're gonna move people around or change things around, it's not gonna work after the change. So you want to make sure that you're strategically looking at the changes and what order they should happen in. Is there anything on the list you want more information from a particular department about?
And the timing of trying to get these projects bid out, done and completed is always an issue. And right now, we're having our own problems getting people to bid on our projects. So that's everywhere, I believe. Either no workers or too many jobs and not enough workers.
And it does take some time to get that bidding process done. So if there's items that Jessica can work on now to get moving quickly, that would be helpful.
See, we don't have the elephant on the list, right?
Right.
My definition of the elephant is what sits behind the courthouse. And, and phase one of the elephant is.
Demolition.
Or restoration, saving of facade, whatever. Maybe. It may be just swipe it away.
I don't think there's any way to save it. I.
Talk about what, where you see that building going, you know? Do you want more courts? Do you want to use this for courts? Do you want, it's all about that.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we, if we moved a courtroom somewhere besides that footprint, it would, it would double the security cost. So I, I think it makes sense to have the courts with one door.
Yes.
ADA door.
Yes.
Right? With a nice foyer where people could come in and there's the, what do you call that little?
Kiosk.
Kiosk there. Hey, I need, I need to see Judge X or I'm spoilt. And right now, it's helter-skelter.
And you put public restrooms, you put elevators that will hold a cot. You, I mean, it.
So if all of you agree that that is a priority, is that something we should start?
Architect.
Yeah, an architect or someone to tell us what the options are.
I think we've already been there a couple of years ago, right? And it's just started, it's, it's on the shelf.
Right. Is that still the plan?
Well, I, I don't, I think it has to be revisited before it's, it's the plan. Because that thing had two buildings adjacent to one another with about four levels in each and neither, no level met with another level. It was.
That was one of the problems to me, that there was, yeah.
Which added a lot of cost.
Yes, most definitely.
That was to take the, this building and make, you know, the existing backside, north side and, and tie those things together. Well, then, all the tying together, maybe it's easier not to have to tie it up together, start over.
It wasn't all floors, is what I understood. It was some of the floors.
Right.
Well, so the courthouse is interesting in that their basement is kind of half underground, half not. So the floors in this building and the floors in the jail do not meet the floors in the courthouse.
True. And we have an ADA ramp here that ends at a stair landing where you either take a wheelchair upstairs or wheelchair downstairs.
You got a building that was built in the eighteen eighties that is, is not.
But to take a ramp and end it at a landing rather than a floor level, boggles my imagination.
Well, we had it even going downstairs where you have the, you got on a little lift thing and you went downstairs from the stairs, you know, so.
But, you know, I watched Aaron's take down the back part of the old Pennies and they did it very quickly. And, you know, it, it was, I guess it was added on later, but the backside, you know, is all enclosed and everything now. So, you know, my, my thing would be, let's take it down first and then let's look at, at the plans that, that we've had before, maybe modify them or, or come up with some new.
Let's schedule a meeting to talk about that because that can be a, we can spend quite a bit of time discussing that. I mean, it's, if you take that down or you're gonna keep the.
Sallyport?
Sallyport. I mean.
Is, is there, is there a, a definition of a Sallyport that says a front door and a back door?
No.
There isn't?
Yeah, I mean, it would be better if it was a drive-through by all means, but it doesn't have, it's like right now, it works for our detention area.
Okay. I mean, even in the movie, The Green Mile, their Sallyport was a fence, but it had a front gate and a back gate.
Yep.
We've just got a front gate.
It is, it would be a whole lot easier if it was a full straight in.
Right.
If, if we could make it that way.
So do you guys wanna pick a date to have that discussion? Maybe not on a Tuesday?
Not on a Tuesday.
No, no.
We need to keep it on the calendar and almost talk about it either monthly or bi-monthly or, or something to keep it, keep it moving. It's, there's so many options is the bad thing. It's a good thing too.
Let's, let's schedule an initial meeting and invite courthouse personnel or whoever that means, the presiding judge and whoever he thinks should be here and the sheriff. The users of.
I would appreciate it.
That building.
I mean, we, we could invite the treasurer and the public administrator, although what, what they want and what they need and what they should have, it probably is not dependent upon it. So.
So do you wanna try like next Thursday? You wanna?
Are we talking in January or what are we talking for?
I'd rather it be a, a new year.
Yeah, I think, I think let's get this up, get the budget done.
And not on a Tuesday, a regular meeting, but maybe January thirteenth, which is a Thursday.
I don't care if we do it on a Tuesday, do it in the afternoon or something. We can have a meeting in the morning and then come back in the afternoon or something. I just don't want it to be a six-hour meeting and us angry. You know how Sam gets.
The eleventh in the afternoon?
That's, any, any of those days work for me.
We'll schedule it for the eleventh. I won't schedule it at one-thirty. And if you can think of anybody else, I'll give you a list of the powers-to-be that maybe we should send you to and.
Everyone's invited, but some are specially invited.
Yes. But if there's a conflict, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe we even put an ending time on it so we just don't sit and blab. Maybe it's one-thirty to.
Three-thirty?
Yeah, I've got a board meeting at four, so if we can.
Let's go one-thirty to three, make it an hour and a half meeting. It's gonna be crispy.
And just take all the chairs out of here. So that way everybody's gotta stand and they won't be just sitting around.
Turn the wheel up.
Take one wheel off.
So back to the list you have here, I mean, like I said, in the past, we have not approved individual items at this point. Normally, we make them come back with some sort of bid or the ask to bid, the particular items they have on the list. They have to bring you a quote or a bid. And then they ask to spend. So if that's the way you.
Last question.
Would like to continue, we can leave it the way it is, or if you want to change around the numbers that I have, I'm okay with that too.
Well, I'm looking at the courts. I think some of that needs to be done, you know? Again, it's not, but.
I think everything on the list other than the building projects are items that most people are wanting next year.
Okay. You got a lot of chairs and furniture. You've got a lot of chairs and furniture.
One you may want to think about is Public Works is asking to replace the fueling system. We have talked in the past about possibly charging the departments an additional five cents more gallon or something and kind of creating a replacement fund for that, because it is used by everyone. I think you could also use capital improvement for that and, and not make it a Public Works issue, so.
What kind of price tag do they have on that? I don't, I remember talking about.
Seventy-one thousand.
Eighty thousand or something like that.
So, John's opinion on this, and I, and I am completely a hundred percent for the doing a five, a five cent per gallon deal, but I think that you buy the new system, out of capital improvements, but then you take that five cents and that's what you use for the FQ, for the inspections, for the filters. If someone by chance drives off with the nozzle in their vehicle, which my guy's been done a few times, and I can give you names, but anyway, and there's also a very nice video. But anyway, when those, when those things have to be replaced, you know, it'd be nice if they had a, a fund to be able to go through versus them trying to find it inside their place, and I don't think that's fair on their part. So, I mean, I'm one of the bigger users, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get hit with this one with anybody else, but I was actually looking at our budget yesterday on how much you put in our fuel, and she, we did go up on fuel, but I still think there's enough there to be able to do the five cents and still be good this year.
So that's one we can talk about, I mean, I think it would have to be some sort of internal service fund on our side. So, a little bit of setup to get that to work.
Once it's set up, it would be sort of automatic.
Right, right.
And, and we are convinced, I guess I have to ask this question here once in a while, that it's, it's best for the county to have a fueling station four miles south of town or whatever it is, as opposed to pulling in a local station with a P card and.
Is it?
Money state.
Speaker from Sheriff's Department, is it the best way to do it? Probably not. Is it probably the cheapest way to do it? Yes.
Okay.
And more importantly, is it the safest way to do it? Yes. Now, I'm gonna have about four dead, but he's hitting me in the back of the head coming this afternoon, I haven't really watched this, but you start, I don't know, I think that you start spreading out like that, and then you have to worry about credit cards or charges and who's gonna be open at three in the morning, who's not gonna be open at three in the morning, and all that kind of stuff.
We did, I think Jessica can give you some more information here, we did look last year at going to a state fuel card versus what we were currently paying. The, the difference in price was significant.
The current arrangement's better?
Yes.
Okay.
So, just like in the courthouse portion of sales tax, Roden Bridges portion will have two departments next year as well. One for sales tax G, one for sales tax H. This is one where Eric proposes the projects that he wants to see for next year, but we really are kind of waiting until the very end of the year to see which projects are still open, which ones will carry forward, 'cause that could adjust which projects he has the funding for and which ones he doesn't. So, we usually have a meeting as close to the 31st as we can to see where that cash forward is and to see which projects still have open purchase orders. Those are all put in first, and then if there's a difference, we, we make it up with whichever project he decides is one that can wait, or maybe it's the fact that we have additional funding and he has an additional project he wants to add. He did go over those projects that are included. Sorry, your book doesn't include them, but up on the screen they do, so if you wanna know which ones they are, I can go back through them.
I may have to write telescope, you know.
There aren't many in the old sales tax, so they have some stormwater improvements to Northport. They have lush road improvements. The, the final amounts on business 50, which that's one, that's the one that's kind of up in the air as to where, where that one's gonna land at the end of the year. We have a little bit in villages that we didn't spend from the five years, that's in there for next year. Again, a little bit in resurfacing, and I actually think part of that, he has some additional costs on Northport he'd like to include, so if we come out better than we think he's going to add to that. But those are really the ones in the old sales tax, and anything that he currently is working on that's still open at the end of the year. So, if there are projects that are currently in, in construction, they will carry forward. And then, in the new sales tax, he has Hem Street Bridge removal, Hickory Hill gravel road upgrade, South Brooks Phase Three, Lakewood Stormwater, and then Tanner Bridge Road Phase Five safety improvements and Rainbow Drive sidewalk construction, and then his normal villages and resurfacing amounts, and then some miscellaneous stormwater. So if you have any questions you want us to send to Eric or anything you want to know about that, that's, that's about all I know. So, that's the first run-through of the book, that's everything besides salaries. I'm going to kind of switch over here. Grab a spreadsheet of salaries and pull it up instead.
Can you figure out some way to enlarge that?
Sorry.
You can pull it up on your computer.
So, I did, after the state put out what they were doing with salaries, I did go through and in the four main departments excluding EMS, 'cause their salaries are a little bit different, I went through and did what, a half percent, a one, a two, a three, a four, a five, and even a six would cost in each fund, and then also calculated what the additional benefits on that would be. So you can play with this, right now, the budget includes a four percent. If you wanted to add an additional one, we can take that four plus the one with benefits would be an additional almost $150,000 to add another one percent to those four funds. EMS is a little more tricky when it comes to deciding that percentage. They currently, right now, have those built-in steps, so they don't truly get COLA like the rest of us do. Their step kind of includes some of that, and their steps vary between positions, what that percentage increase is. So, if you have a new paramedic, their first step is over four and a half percent, automatic the first year, no matter if it's this year or a different year. So, theirs is a little harder to, to determine.
Keep up the rest of the count.
So, they have this salary schedule.
Yep.
When we adopt a COLA, that doesn't change that schedule?
No.
Built into their step phases, because they get a step every year.
So, it was supposed to be a three-year look back and then move the whole scale after we do a three-year evaluation of where the market went. This year would have been that third year, but with Eric being new, we kind of decided to give him a year to, to really evaluate where they're at in, in next year.
Probably be good to look at that and let him take a look at and really get a feel for it. I mean, it wasn't a bad plan, because it, it was kind of front-loaded to get him to stay for a year, two years, and in the middle, it kind of tapers off. So, you're getting a little more upfront, but then in, there's other years that they weren't getting as much possibly as what the rest of the county COLA is, but then it's also backward to try to get him to stay, you know, six, seven, eight years, and that's the theory, is that once you have that long, a lot of times they'll stick with us, so. It's worth trying, we can see what Eric thinks. And I think next year, you know, let him get his feet kind of dug in and.
Going back to the last two years, comparing what they got compared to the percentage that we took was definitely different.
Okay.
Really going up one percent isn't as much as what I thought it would be.
For, for the different funds or for total?
Well, you said one fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand, takes care.
For those four funds, yes.
And the four funds are?
General Fund, Law Enforcement, Public Works, and Assessor. So, General Fund includes Auditor, Collector, Treasurer, Commission, all of those.
You just talked about everybody except EMS?
Yes, yes.
Okay, for a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty is a one percent.
I expected a bigger number.
I did, too.
No, because your four, your four percent's only 5.94.
Okay.
Yeah, I think back.
And just the three benefits that are effective, of just the retirements and the social security.
Right.
We just kind of used the three percent.
It doesn't change health.
No.
No, your health insurance is set dollar amount for present.
It does, it does change.
Social Security, loggers, and SERF.
Yes. Which is a, what kind, is it like a 10%, 11%?
It's more like 15, 18.
18.
18 percent.
So, th- those three, if you, we don't call them really fringes, because social security, you know, is not really a fringe, but, but those, those, those add to 18, and then SERF, I'm sorry, health is sort of a fixed number, no matter what your salary is, so, okay.
Right, so all of our full-time employees, we have in there unless you've opted out of it, as a set dollar amount for your health insurance.
And we know what that's gonna be next year.
We do, it will change slightly with open enrollment numbers, I haven't updated those that have chosen to add dependents or whatever, but.
And SERF does keep increasing every year, because as older people, as we retire, you will pick up new people that you will have to pay the four percent on. Currently not paying the four percent on some of those.
And I would say that the fund that's seeing that the most at the moment is Public Works. We're down to very few in General Fund that that's making a difference on, but Public Works still has quite a few, I would say.
And we, we do get refunds there, so it kind of helps offset the four percent, too.
If somebody had the, the goal of matching the state at 5.5, it would be another $225,000 on top of what you already have?
Yeah, the 148 plus an additional 62, so 211,566.
211,566.
'Cause they did five and a half, was it five and a half?
5.5. My understanding is the employees are gonna have a raise of 2% on January 1, that was from the last session, they passed it, but they made it effective not on July 1, but January 1. Okay, Governor Parsons, my understanding, is saying it should be 5.5 increased in a supplemental and carried forward through the next fiscal year. So he's actually asking for it to be effective in February, the 5.5, on top of the two.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So, my, just dreaming, if we said, let's keep pace with state government, it's 211,566 for the state, or for the county to keep pace with the state government. Two, 211,566, more than the 5.94 to get the 4%, right?
Right. I will tell you that I think most of our funds can handle that. Public Works is probably the one that's a little tighter than others.
Someday, we, we may get to where you say, we can't do that because Fund X doesn't allow it, but I would probably fire back, what's Fund X? Well, it's, it's a, it's Nick and his person, is that a fu, is that one of them?
They're not a fund by themselves.
Oh, they're under general, okay, well, but.
So, most of the time, General Fund is the one that is the tightest.
Okay.
And it includes probably the most people besides the Sheriff's Department, so, because it has all those individual departments, you're picking up all the smaller departments together in one fund.
So, there's no one little fund that could, could sort of veto.
The Assessors Fund would be the smallest fund as far as employees, and it's only 12 unless you add more, so. And most of the time, theirs isn't necessarily the issue.
Okay.
So.
There's been years that we have been better than the state, I mean, so, we'll put that out there.
There's been years when 49 states have been better than this state.
But there were old years, in the 80s and early 90s, that we couldn't keep up with what the state was doing, so I'll give you that.
Yeah, it's been back and forth. I don't know that we have to make this particular decision right this moment. I wanted you to have this in your mind before we talk about the, the additional employees.
Okay.
So, that's what I think kind of affects this, is.
Right, so it's kind of a double-edged sword, we, do we take care of the people we have with additional money here? Or do we add additional people, or do we do a mixture of both? I don't know. So, let's, I don't know that I need a yes or a no, but let's talk about some of the requests for additional people.
Well, I'd like to take care of our peoples.
I gotta.
So.
Turkey clerk wants a part time.
Public Works, I've got them written out, but then, they're adding them.
Yeah, so let's. I'm gonna go through what I have in there, and then I'll go through the ones that.
Cause I was trying to keep the list to.
Requested beyond what I have.
Where's the keeper of the stairs? Hold on a second, you wanna wait, let's.
Let's take a break.
Stretch legs.
Okay, jumping jacks.
Do you find another cord? So, I guess this is mine that came with the computer, since we have a.
Docking station.
Yeah, docking station in the office.
Do you carry that cord in here?
Yeah, I brought it in here, I just left it in here.
Well.
So you should have a cord.
How's your dockings? Well, I don't have another cord, I guess, that, I got a cord that goes in the docking station that powers the docking station.
So this cord powers the docking station otherwise? So I got this one from somewhere else then?
Well, I don't have that one.
No, I, I brought this one, I thought, came with my computer, and then I thought the docking station had its own plug-in. So, what Brian had was what I have here, probably.
Wait a minute, there's two cords here.
I brought this one in, Harry says.
Chris used to plug his in.
There's two cords over there.
One's to the microphone, they listen in on whenever, the other one's turned off.
Hello, John. I thought you were bringing vodka.
You like your shirt that I'm wearing?
Yeah.
I wanna return it.
It's got long enough sleeves for you.
It does, but I bought this like seven years ago, and the button came off, so I want a new shirt.
There should be extra buttons sewn at the tail of the.
I bought it from you, there should be some kind of award.
Here, here, I can fix it. Come on over here, I got, I got my stapler here.
Or go down to the ladies.
It wasn't for those ladies down there. I would look like a bum, and when I go down to their fine stuff, I just say, I need a pants and shirt, and they just pick the colors out for me, 'cause they know. Well, they know, I don't have to.
That's sweet, though.
Oh, but I don't know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna look like a clown after they close down, I'll look like a. Oh, but I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm going to look like a clown after they close down. I'll look like a freaking clown. And they don't bring your ankles anymore, damn it.
Sam, I did text that to him. I, I screenshotted the email and texted it and told him maybe he couldn't expand it.
Yeah, I just. Yeah.
It was just so much that we typed into. So I sent him a picture of it. Hopefully he can see it out of the, then I can let us know. His first question is going to be, do I really have a job?
Martin, how are you?
My what?
Your ability to do what you do.
She has more patience than I did when I did that.
It's an amazing amount of work.
At least a word that's out of your mouth.
Yep, she has to retain.
Uh, no, they don't. They didn't.
She has a job.
You know, it's kind of talking about.
Yeah. They're kind of like cocktanning or.
There you go.
They wouldn't let me open it up and taste it.
Everything's good for me to do.
Awesome, thank you.
She's so glad, she's so glad.
Well, because of the.
I hate this time of year.
I figured it would be one of the, the challenges that you liked.
Nope. I'll take a nod at any day over this.
No, the first couple of years you loved it.
He's reading more into it. What was there?
I was like, thank God she loves it.
I had the amount. We need to know what it.
Oh, there's a copy of it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't really want to read it.
I'm going to.
No, but do you?
I forgot about that.
What do you want to know about them?
Do they come in and do like a overhaul or is it only in the break?
Oh, what a deal. The troubles he goes through. He could just brought pie.
Vodka pie. He was supposed to bring a pot today. Yeah, that, that, he didn't do that. I'm, I'm just, I'm just.
No, 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 I'm not one pie. No.
Yeah.
Oh goodness.
On your shirt?
Yeah, I'm fixing it. You got the button? You got the button?
When I iron, I press down from. I iron and press it.
Okay.
You all ready?
Yeah.
I'm still snacking. I'm still snacking.
Well, if the sheriff were to bring a pot, I'll luckily promise. But since he didn't.
All right, I'm just going to run through.
That should take a second. Another, I thought we weren't ready yet.
I'm like, I didn't finish my snacking.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot something from the new bakery. It was really good.
Their pastries are amazing.
It really was good.
Okay. Additional employee.
These are the changes beyond the four percent, so.
Where do I pull this up?
Um, it's, you want to show Harry if I can get to that file on your drive? Can I use this?
Yeah, it's, you can use. Is it pulling up?
She's got a separate one for EMS, but this is.
Okay, thank you.
Should I wait for Jeff to get back?
Yes, yes. Now, so wait on me.
Is, uh, are we at the, uh?
General is the tab at the bottom we want to be on?
General.
Well, whoever you come find it for online.
Oh, this is, this is a.
Gosh, yours, I can't read that. I do have a telescope I can bring, but I don't think that would.
First one on the list is the sheriff's office. Is that?
Um, see down here, put it over here.
Here.
General.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is. Okay. All right, now let me blow this up. Okay, we're on the general tab.
Yep.
So the first name there is.
Mine.
You.
I'm always the top of the list.
What list is the question, right?
We, we are in the first department and my last name starts with D, so I am usually the top of the list.
Pretty much, huh? Okay.
Um, I'll wait for you. Yeah, don't look at that one. That one's, that one's way too hard done.
I think we can get through this first one pretty quick.
So I'm going to kind of skip over the ones that are just a four percent. Cause there's not really any changes there, so.
So we're getting all.
I'm going to hit on the departments that have changes.
First one I see is, is a, is adjustment a change, ADVA or not?
So it is. Um, that first one you're going to see is for the collector, but that's actually fees that he collects from the city for collecting taxes that go into his salary line. So that one's an automatic adjustment based on an agreement for the collector. So, um, that one's not a new one. That's one that's in there every year.
Okay, so that, we go past that?
Yep, so the first department you're going to see changes to is one twenty-four, which is the public administrator. And we kind of talked when Ralph was in here, um, we're taking a part-time position to full-time. So we're eliminating his part-time, um, and making that a full-time administrative assistant position. And then he wanted to see adjustments to his de- to deputy public administrators um, up to fit a little more into the salary schedule, so, um.
When you do that adjustment there, that includes, I mean, that's after the four percent for that, for that line, or that box.
In all the ones you're going to see, I took the COLA first. And then I'm doing the adjustment.
To get to the proposed.
To the proposed.
Got it.
Um, there are a few that just asked for a flat dollar amount adjustment, not a particular salary. In some of those cases, it was just the flat dollar. But, um, in this circumstance, he was asking that they go to a proposed salary. Um, my adjustments here are a little bit smaller than what Ralph requested. Um, he wanted them to go a little higher than what is here. And he also wanted to give an adjustment to his chief deputy public administrator.
So the, these adjustments don't, uh, agree to his request?
Correct. Um, it's some, but not all.
Right.
So I don't know if you just want me to go through them all so you guys kind of have an idea and then we can come back and talk about them individually, so you can see all the ones?
Yeah, let's do that, so we have public administrator has two adjustments.
Okay.
Um, recorder doesn't show anything new, but, um, her request was that the position that is being funded by her recorders trust fund at the moment, um, be fully funded by the county. Um, and I did include that cost in there. So she had an agreement right now where she was paying the salary and we were paying the benefits. Um, I incorporated that whole person into the county budget without that reimbursement, so. Um, there is one in information systems for, um, the information systems technologist. That was requested by Brian.
Okay.
Um, the one you see in one thirty-one is that adjustment to fifteen dollars an hour. That's the first person you're going to see that was under the fifteen. Um, that adjustment gets that employee up to thirty-one-two, which is fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Next one is the health department. Um, she had two sets of adjustments. One was for her, um, front office staff, so the clinic clerks that sit out front and deal with the public. Um, she also had some adjustments to the environmental specialists. Um, one that came in under, just because he was here before and has the qualification, she wanted to move him up. Um, she actually has two of those. One's a little less than the other as far as the adjustment. And then, um, she had one, two, two employees that were under the fifteen, so you'll see those two adjustments as well. Um, next on the list is juvenile. Um, she had two front office staff, so her receptionist and her office manager. Um, she did away with a, I think, they had a third person that did like that office stuff. She divided the duties and gave it to these two and is not replacing that person.
So there's a net savings there?
Um, there is, um, but sh- in the process, she also took a part-time legal assistant and made it full-time. She did that in October.
All right.
So yes and no.
And they had one person under fifteen?
Yes, their cook was under the fifteen, so he has an adjustment to get him there. Um, nothing there, nothing there. Um, prosecutor, even though it's nothing new, we did have the one, um, assistant prosecutor that was removed. And then we had one full-time person that took a significant salary increase and then he added a part-time prosecuting attorney. So you're seeing some adjustments there, but they're not clear on here. You see, he lost a position and reallocated that funding to part-time and one employee. Um, he did have some additional adjustment requests. I never did get it by person.
Is that that seventy-five?
Yes. So I don't, I don't have that breakdown and it was not included in the budget.
Okay.
Um, next one where you see something new is the parks supervisor. That's the one requested for parks at the forty-two thousand. Um, there's also a part-time position in parks requested that you don't see on this sheet because this is only full-time employees.
Now, did we, did we skip to a different tab there for that or?
Nope, down at the bottom, your department, one seventy-two.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah, got it, got it.
And that's all the ones I included in general fund. We're going to skip to public works at the moment. So skip over law enforcement for a minute and we're going to do. We're going to skip public, to public works. Um, let me get rid of these here for a minute.
What's the extra stip- oh, I see what it is. Never mind. It's two.
Yep, um, so theirs only includes the four percent, but, um, when they originally proposed the budget, they wanted to take the person that retired that was at a higher salary and fill that with two lower salary people. So you see an open and a new, and then they have an additional open one just in general. So taking a sixty-four, I mean, somewhere right in there, sixty-four thousand dollar employee and creating two thirty-one thousand dollar employees. Um, and then he had, um, a handful of other adjustments that he wanted. I did not include the other adjustments because at one point he decided, oh, I don't need that new person. We're just going to fill with one, not two. But we had an extensive list of people that he wanted to adjust.
So when you remove a sixty-four, does that include the benefits or is that just the salary?
So in that circumstance, the, the percentage amounts would have been the same to add to, but you would have added a full amount of health insurance to add another person.
So adding two of them at thirty-one or thirty-two is really gonna, it's going to be more than that sixty-four?
Yes, yes.
So it's, okay, just making sure.
And we'll pull Eric's list when you want to see what he's requesting different from mine. So I did not include any adjustments, but I have that new position in there. He kind of flip flopped on me in the middle and decided he didn't want to do the new position, but wanted to add salary adjustments, so we'll come back to that one. Um, assessor asked for two additional. I did not include the two additional. So if you guys decide you want to do that, we.
But as we sort of left that yesterday, they're there for the asking when you find the.
So, yes, we will have to, that's something different than normal, so we'll have to tell them that. We're not going to put the money in your salary line until you bring us a person to fill them at the correct salary.
Yeah, we had told him that five years ago when he was looking for his commercial appraisal.
You, you may well have, but I'm not sure that was what was heard or remembered.
So on the assessment fund, the amount of money that comes from the assessment fund to fund the assessor's office, it's based on number of parcels?
Yep, he gets extra dollars per parcel.
So the state tax commission doesn't, they just take that and that's kind of how they're figuring out how many people he should have doing it because of.
And then he also receives a fee from the city for their assessments.
Does that come to him or it come to the office?
Comes to the office.
To the office.
And that was same thing with the collector that comes to the office?
Um, so collector collects way more fees than that, but part of the agreement is that he gets an additional three thousand dollars as far as collecting those fees for them. So the agreement for fees for the collector is different.
It's a little different, okay.
Yes, yes. Um, and then the assessor gets a commission from property taxes as well. So you'll see a tax amount in there. So those are his three sources of funding.
Well, now, when you say him, or are you saying his, oh, okay, there's, there's.
Not him.
Got it.
Not him.
But the assessment fund is based on number of parcels and they're saying, basically, this is what it's going to cost you all to take care of this many parcels.
So his per parcel amount is not as significant as his commission amount that he gets on your tax bill. So the bulk of his money comes from.
No, don't say his, say the office.
The assessor's office money, fund, the assessment fund money comes from a commission on property tax bills.
Okay. And the state tax commission counts the, or has turned in the number of parcels times four dollars and ninety-two cents or some number like that, and that they send money to the assessment fund.
Yes.
And that assessment fund, is that a, a million dollar fund?
Um, their total fund at the moment's two point five.
And growing?
Um, yes, it has grown. He's going to grow about a hundred and fifty thousand this year.
Why, why?
Um, I think some of that is open positions. He always has open positions. We budget them all to be full. He has open ones throughout the year. Um.
Was this year the first time that he's been fully staffed? Cause I, I didn't remember, but y'all said he was fully staffed.
And I don't think it was for maybe about a couple of months.
I always thought we had open positions and that was part of my.
And I, he has one.
Let's get these positions.
He has one open at the moment, so.
Is it typical for a county assessor fund to have enough money to pay? Is it typical for a county assessor fund to have enough money to pay the salaries for the next four years?
When I first started here, general fund was subsidizing the assessment fund.
So the answer is no?
No.
Well, it was not typical for us. But today, the county of Cole assessor fund has two
Well, the total budget will be two-point-five, but one-point-four of that is a carry-forward.
Okay, one-point-four.
Yep.
There was, there was stipulations that changed within the, either the one percent or the, the state funding amount that let that increase. And non-spending also let that increase.
And my question is, is that normal, typical, average, or are we an outlier?
I do not.
Or
I think we are outlier. I, I think there are still counties that help fund their assessment fund. And we had multiple years where we were spending more than we were bringing in due to the Ameren case. We had, I mean, we had a significant amount of money where we were fighting
So when, when the attorneys for that were sending bills to us and we were paying x percent of it, we being the big
The county.
The county. Was that being paid out of the assessment fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So he does have some
Not he.
His fund does need some sort of reserve for those types of situations.
Got it.
Because they, they arise at different times and it's different entities.
I, I'd just like to know if we could be criticized for squeezing his expenditures while this fund is growing and it's enormous.
Most of the time, it, we have stayed about a million dollars is his reserve and
Not his.
The assessment fund's reserve.
And it really is your fund? It's been determined it is your fund?
Well, I know he lost the case and he got hammered by Western District after he lost it at the circuit level. When, was that back in twelve or thirteen or fourteen?
So we've been trying to hold about a million dollars.
Okay, fair enough.
But due to open positions, it is flexing up.
Okay.
So in that particular fund, the decision is that we will fund two additional people. I think you need to specify what salaries you want to fund them at.
And his request was thirty-four and thirty-two. If I got that right.
I think it depends on the person, because if we bring somebody in that can actually do appraisals. And I would really like to see us get a commercial appraiser on staff.
So that's the concern, is that's not one of the positions he's requesting at the moment.
Well, he may not be able to find anybody.
I wanna be on record that if he finds a, a
General certified?
No, I'm going something, if he finds a, a star of somebody who he or she is, hey, this is the answer. I wouldn't limit him to thirty-two, thirty-four. What does it take to, to hire somebody who can, can tangle with the other side? And has got the, probably a few extra initials behind their name. Some certifications.
But in that circumstance, he needs to bring that person to you before he makes an offer of employment?
Yes, and he, we just need to go back and forth. What's, you know, what have you found so far? Nothing? Well, maybe we need to raise that offer or advertise a higher range. I'm open to helping cure the, the problem.
Okay.
So are you guys okay? I mean, we can finish that one. Sixty-six thousand, put in contingency to, as a place marker.
Yeah. Yes, it's sort of a, it's, but he's gotta ask, he's gotta be ready to make the offer. And before he makes the offer, he says, can I make the offer at this price? And we say, go for it. That, that's me speaking. Okay?
I'm gonna change this note and then
I think it's probably more important on the commercial side, because that's where we get more requests for the BOE.
And it's also the one that they have more firepower on their side. They go out and hire, you know, the commercial folks can go out and hire an attorney, somebody with lots of initials behind their name and
You know, DevNet, you plug numbers in there and it does your comparisons, subtracts, adds, does whatever is some of it can be done. I mean, I've done it in real estate. I've put the numbers in there and you just have spots where you have to pull things out. Marshall and Swift is very reputable on how they make adjustments for things, too. So, I mean, you can get a pretty good idea with those. But the commercial, that's a, you know, there's so many different ways, well, there are three different ways to come to a value. Cost approach.
The income, the income approaches can vary so much.
Yeah.
So I want you to look, though, if you take the cash forward and contingency out, he really only has about twenty-seven thousand. His fund only has twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars in the black. So if you add these two positions, you are going to create a deficit in his fund by the difference.
But if we would add a commercial, we would be able to remove the contracted. Because that's what we use a notes for, correct?
Yes, so right now, there's only twenty thousand in there, which we need to increase with the two new
Two new cases going to this tax commission, is that? There's that, and then there's also that this person, in a sense, can sort of pay their way. Because an assessment that has been established by a new, new employee and it's a, it's a higher assessment than was previously there, results in more revenue when those folks pay, doesn't it? Don't you say that the assessor gets office, gets the lion's share of their revenue based upon the, the commission? The commission would increase.
It's a funky formula. It's so much percent up to x dollars of assessed valuation, then it drops to
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a
Yeah, it's a sliding
De-escalating.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but the previous one I did, commercial, was also the chief deputy and had supervisory role, so we could get somebody and let them focus on commercial and
I think you just are going to have to make it clear that the goal is to eliminate that contract. Otherwise, you will be spending down his reserve at about a sixty-six thousand dollar amount per year.
But it would take twenty years to get rid of it.
As long as you don't have another Ameren case or something where we're digging the reserves to pay that.
Yeah, and we, we, maybe at some point, this, this is not the time to discuss it, but I, I found it a little confusing as to why this building or this organization was paying legal fees for political subdivisions, basically, that would get eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five percent of the proceeds. Why wasn't, why weren't those
They did have an arrangement at the beginning. They were paying part of it, but then as the case went on, we didn't re-approach them to any of into the thing. So, no, we paid the majority of the cost, yes. But we did go back to some of the schools, but it was not near what they were reaping to gain from that compared to what we were.
So that's all we went to them, because they were the ones that were getting a lion's share of the money coming in for it. But at the same time, I feel like it's, it's our job to defend our valuation of it. And if, if we didn't defend that one at all, this would have snowballed. Everybody would came in and said, well, you know, if we fight it hard enough and come to it, then we'll get it reduced.
Well, not everybody would, I mean, maybe every utility would have or that, that branch of the, of the economy.
Big box stores around here.
Right. And, and those two that are going to the state tax commission is, or
The two new ones that we just signed are both hotels.
Hotels, okay.
One other thing we didn't talk about and he didn't mention either. He had five thousand dollars for office equipment and furniture, but I never saw a list or items that he wanted to purchase out of there.
But in capital or in?
He has a line in his budget for five thousand dollars.
His capital usually, because he's a separate fund himself, just like the sheriff's department, just like public works, a lot of them pay their own capital out of them.
Is that what we usually leave in there, is like a five thousand kind of placeholder on that?
Usually he
Twelve thousand for twenty-one?
Yeah, twelve thousand was to replace his computer. So like last year, I worked with Brian and that was to replace their computers in their office, so they were on their, their cycle of replacement for computers. The year before that, it looks like he replaced the copier. So normally, we get some sort of
What if, if you would ask the office to identify what the five thousand would be for, it could stay without an identification, it would go? Is that fair? Okay.
So back to the spreadsheet, let's do law enforcement.
Motion to adjourn. Just kidding, I rejected all the motion.
So I did not add any positions in the sheriff's department. And that's the bulk of his requested changes that we still have left on the list. Right now, it's just the four percent for his current employees. Oh, yeah, yeah. So his request is currently a new SRO, which will be partially funded. A new jail detective. And a new lieutenant that will be in charge of professional standards. He also has a request for a four percent increase for his part-time and a one percent merit. So let's do this.
So those don't show up here?
I did not include them, so they're not in the numbers at the moment. They would all be additions to the current amount.
Everything I put on my paper is changes to the budget that Kristen put out.
Okay.
So his budget, we have been spending down his reserves with his capital purchases. So if I take out his cash forward and his contingency. And we've made some other changes since then. I should be off by a negative amount of the capital improvements, but we have made some changes to other things already. So that difference is So he has about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings with the changes that have been made already. I don't think it comes out exactly to that. It's two-oh-one-eight-eighteen. Huh, stop it. Stop it.
A lot of it is the sales tax increase.
Yep, so we adjusted sales tax, we adjusted his admin fee, we adjusted the surplus property, the federal prisoners, the nine-one-one.
So this, this net number that you're announcing right now versus the number that I'm looking at on page, what? One?
It's like one-oh-eight, one-oh
Well, so then, the net in the book's going to be zero, because we present a balanced budget. But normally, he has a deficit built into his budget for his capital improvements. We're spending down his reserves with capital items. So the six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-two-sixteen that he has in his capital improvement line would be his deficit this year. Right now, it shows four-forty-three-ninety-eight because of the other changes we've already made. So he has about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings at the moment with the other changes we have made. So if you want to use that savings to add employees or change the percentage of COLA or do a merit, those are the decisions we need to make at this point.
What does another one-and-a-half percent COLA cost him? Costs that office.
So one-and-a-half percent in law enforcement would be sixty-thousand-six-ninety-six. Oh, that's without benefits, sorry. Seventy-one thousand
Plus eighteen percent on top of that.
Yeah, seventy-one thousand-seven-twelve. And that's based on total salary. Some of that, I guess we do need to talk about the sheriff's salary as well. Are you guys implementing the change to the sheriff's salary?
No, we're suing.
Twenty-twenty-two. It is currently in there. I have included
The, the statutory number is in there.
Yes. So I do know there is lawsuit.
Yes.
And I have warned the sheriff as well, that if it does get paid out to him, to be careful if something would happen with the lawsuit and it has to be paid back.
If it has to be paid, ma'am?
Yeah.
Are other counties going ahead and paying that?
It's about a fifty-fifty split.
I mean, are some counties saying no and we're not paying?
Yes. There are some counties that are saying no, they're not paying it.
I would pay it.
It's the law.
Yeah.
Currently, the law.
Yeah.
Yes.
So how they, to get by, by not paying it, I'm not sure how
I, I don't either. I mean, I think in the long run, the law says you had to do it, you should have done it. I mean, I think they're gonna be the ones paying it back. They should be escrowing at that point to be like, hey, it's here, we're just not gonna release it, I mean, but It's two-oh-one-eight-something.
I think my numbers are right, though, but anyway.
Two-oh-one-eight-eighteen.
I would, I would, I would remove the jail detective position and, and that would keep me at about a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. So I'd still be about eighty-thousand dollars in black.
So I like getting an additional person for, you know, half the price of the SRO.
Yeah, I do, too.
I like that one as much as anything. And then that's, that's what's gonna I like that one as much as anything. And then that's, that's what I was going to kind of ask you if you had to pick which one of the other ones.
It'd be the jail detective would be my lowest priority. I mean, I think it would be very beneficial. I think it, it's already, because when we first started this position, when they came to me, this was a, we didn't even come to you guys, but they decided to make the change of position there. And then I said, if it works in three months, then we'll go to you guys and-
Y'all had somebody that you just turned into the jail detective essentially and-
And, but now, since last year, you, I mean, we took them out to the, where they had the stipend and they're full of tech now. And they help out immensely back in the jail, the different, uh, some of the, uh, drugs that we find in there, the assaults that we have, the, the fake injuries that we have, they're, they're reviewing video all the time to, to be able to show that something's actually happened or someone's faking something, which I don't try to believe that happens in a jail. So it's, and it's also, you know, if, if we get a complaint, uh, those detectives are able to look at the, the video and turn it over to the supervisor. So it's, they sold me on it, uh, without a doubt, and I would like to have it, but if one's not there, it's not there.
So then my other argument was going to be to eliminate, you know, one of the, not eliminate a position, but you don't take a position and we're able to pay the, do a merit for some of the positions that you're having troubles filling if you're running into that, so.
I really think you guys are appreciating the 4% COLA for sure. Uh, God knows we need it, but with my staff, I'm 15 down right now. So i- if I keep losing people, I mean, things are going to get real bad. So I have to do something to stop the bleed. The 4%, or 5%, whatever you guys go with, 10%, whatever you want to go with, is good. I don't know if you picked up on the 10% question, but anyway, is, is very good, but the merit is, is even more so. Uh, the merit, which I think is too low. Uh, I'd like to get it higher, but, uh, the merit, it, it's something different for our staff. Remember, uh, we're unique, unique animals when it comes to the, the county. We get judged, uh, for what we do at 3:00 in the morning, not only by our staff and by me, by the public and pretty much everybody in the world. It's hard enough to get people to come and apply for the Cole County Sheriff's Department. It's another thing to keep them here. Uh, we don't pay as much as agencies around us. Uh, and, and that's, and whenever JCPD gets their raise popped in, it's going to be more so. Capital Police even raised their salary. I don't want to get into a big race within other agencies because we can't win. We, I don't have the, the money to win a fight like that. But what I would like to do is make it to where the staff that I have, uh, will stay with me, and then we can work harder on. I'm looking at a recruitment video. I'm looking at doing some other things to try to attract more to us. But we have to do, we, we have to do better with what I have. I gotta stop the bleed. And, uh, one way to do that is the merit. The merit also is a positive influence to be able to, to, to get my staff to do what they're supposed to. Um, they get, the merit, uh, is a, we get evaluations, we do them twice a year, uh, they're very serious about them. They're, so they're limited, even though if they get a, there's a 1% merit, that doesn't mean they're going to get a 1% merit. It depends on how they get evaluated. And we use how they are with customer service, uh, use of force complaints. Um, you know, it's a plethora of things that we judge them on, that their supervisors judge them on. So I real feel, I feel strong about the 1%. I'd like to go 1.5. I'd really like to go 1.5, but it is just not in the funding.
So Kristen, you, you know, we were at 4%, now we're talking 5 or, or more than that. And you said like EMS is, is going to be a, a hard, could, could we, say we go to 5, could we give him 4% COLA and then get, use that 1% for merit or?
I think if you're going to consider it a COLA, the COLA has to be-
Across the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you do merit there, you have to look at the other departments.
Okay.
I think that's my only concern with his request is the part-time increase and the merit raise are two things we're not doing in other departments at the moment. So we've tried to do as much as we can the same. Um, those are two things that currently aren't in there for anybody else.
So-
And, and I understand merit in his department. He has a larger staff and he does a good job with merit. We have run into problems in the past with merit dollars and how they're distributed and things like that, so.
And I understand what you're saying, and I know you want to be fair, and, and I'll go on the record again, saying that being a commissioner during budget time and the auditor sucks. But the fact of the matter is, we are different than other people. EMS is different. You all granted that last year whenever you gave them the holiday, the double, double time holiday stuff, when you did the step promotion. You've recognized that they are a different entity and they operate in a different manner. Therefore, you do things different for them. I'm the same way. The merit is different for me. I gotta have it. I need it. Because in other words, if I don't have the merit, then evaluations are nothing. And my staff spends a lot of time on these evaluations, and they mean nothing if we're not attaching some kind of a number. And 1% is a very minute number when it looks at one person, but it's the, it's, I don't want to say it's the thought of it, but it's the, the positive reinforcement that we're doing for my staff. So we, we really, I, I understand you want to be the same and you, and you want to look across the board. I get that. But just because there's a 1% merit doesn't mean all my staff is going to get a 1% raise. I don't work it that way. The merit with me is based on their evaluation. And not everybody gets a 5. Matter of fact, you have to write, to get perfect score, you have to write up, it even costs the supervisor even more because he has to write up justification on why that 5% is there. And if it's below a 3, they have to write justification on why it's below there. So we, we hold hard and fast for evaluations. We have to have that. We are, we are a different entity than anybody else. And I'm not taking away from anybody. I'm not saying that public work shouldn't deserve it or anything like that. I'm talking about the Cole County Sheriff's Department. I have it in my budget. I need the, I need the 1%. Actually, I'm at 1.5, but I just don't see the numbers.
So I'd agree with you. It's, it's a different animal over there. We do things different in different areas, just like EMS.
Yes, sir.
So my thing would be what's, what's more important, having X amount of dollars for merit raises or additional positions? Um, you know, do we try to keep who we have, or do we add positions? Uh, as far as the merit thing too, we can, we can put the money in there, but we don't release it until we get the evaluations and make sure that it's not just, well, I'm just going to do it 1% across the board. And I don't think you've ever done it that way anyway, but, I mean, we do have some control over that. So I mean, that's just something to consider, if, if we do want to treat them different, because we do treat other departments different, specifically EMS. So, and if we're going to do this, I want to do it now in budget time. I don't want to come back next April, June, July. Well, I'm still having troubles getting people. I need some money to pay these guys more to entice them to come to Cole County.
I gotta stop, I gotta stop the bleed right now.
So I would much rather go that route than adding positions.
But, that's not the, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's not the same, because the cost for a merit raise is $32,000, right? 32,375 is how much to, for a 1% merit raise, because not everybody gets a merit raise. You had to have, you have to be in a position, I think it's within six months before you can get, before you're eligible for a merit raise. So there'll be some that won't be eligible for a merit raise. So that's how it's different from COLA. Um, and if you're talking, I mean, uh, the lieutenant position is $75,600. Now, that's not a yearly rate, that's including benefits, but, um, so I don't know how you can, I don't know how you can say that the, you either got to have the merit raise or the, uh, or the new positions, because it's, the, the money is significantly different. You, you tell me how much money I can spend and I will, and I will make it work with my budget. But I'm just telling you, I, I need that merit.
I think you're going to have to just, I COLA to, to even give him that number. So if you decide you're changing the COLA amount, that will change his number, because my understanding is if you give a COLA like that, we are giving the COLA to everyone at the same rate.
So, and if you end up going higher on the COLA, I don't want you, I don't want the county not to get a higher COLA because of me. So if you want to go to a higher COLA, you tell me how much money that is, and I'll figure out on my priorities. I'll cut some more stuff off there if you want to.
Well, uh, but, but COLA is, is the same percent for everybody except-
Elections.
EMS, no.
EMS.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
And theirs is because they have that built in.
Right, but, but they're, once again, they're different.
Yeah.
Okay, but this guy is different too, because his competitors, the Jefferson City Police Department, the citizens just said by 80% margin, they need more money in the police department and fire department. And that's going to, that's, if they're honest, if the city administrators and officials and everyone else over there is honest, and that flows through to them, your job just got tougher.
Oh, yeah. And it's, and I supported the tax, sales tax, I still do. Um, but I'm not only losing to JCPD, but I lost two, uh, this past week to the state.
Okay, and they're, you know, the state's looking at 2% more and 5.5% more and, and maybe a better, I don't know.
You know, and another, another difference in how we operate is we're 24-hour, they're rotating shifts. They're, I mean, it just, I'm with you though.
And, until, um, until I get stopped, my, my thought is, is, is to go for 5.5 on COLA. Could get talked out of that. Uh, I think it was general consensus that 4 was reasonable, but that was before we heard the governor speak this week. And, uh, whether or not we get there, I, I'm, I'm with Jeff on, uh, the things that he just said about, we, we need to do this, whatever, whatever merit there is, it has to be at the beginning of the year rather than through the year. And it's, because then that, that's when it starts to snowball, uh, to other departments.
Other two. What's your thoughts on merit money, be, or on COLA? Because I think if we're going to change that COLA amount, I need to put that in the budget and see what that number looks like in each fund, as far as does that throw them one way or the other?
But, uh, it, well, it can't, can it? 1.5% more? Is it, is it a tipping point? And, and what, what if it is? What, what if one department can't afford a merit and they, there are 25 employees and we got 375 employees? Do we say, well, sorry, that little department over there stopped it for everybody?
It's not one department, it's the funds.
It's the fund. So if you're-
Well, I know, but, but there were days, there were years when we pumped money into the assessors fund. We don't do that anymore. Uh, why, why did we change?
Because their funding formula changed.
Okay. So what's to keep the county commission from pumping money into a fund?
No jeopardizing general fund, because the only where you have to take it from is general fund.
Right.
Yes.
And, and that's not a good-
Yeah, because you can't steal from any other planning.
I understand, but what, but you can put it in, you can't maybe take it out.
Well, you're just setting, uh, setting yourself up, I guess. I don't know. If it's just for a one-time, one-time expense, but when you're talking about a salary, that is not a one-time expense.
You know the way I look at, this is, is like a family with 10 kids and, hey, kids, we're going to have a great Christmas. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Debbie was a bad girl. Nobody gets Christmas. Well, that's not right.
Well, we've, we've never really done that.
Well-
So you're talking about the law enforcement fund? I mean, we put 2 million into that already.
No, I, I was looking at it more from a, a 50,000 feet that, you know, i- if, if it was desirable to go to some kind of a, a COLA of X, but it, this one fund, it really stretched that fund to do it, well, how do we fix that so that that one fund doesn't punish everybody else?
So I think-
We're making adjustments instead of just giving them a flat amount of money, I think is the difference.
Okay.
And I, I understand, you know, that concept, that if in the Sheriff's Department you allow merit, you don't in others, is that, is that the problem, or is it the starting wage of those different positions?
I, I would say every department that competes with, uh, the outside world, and the outside world has just told their competitors that we're going to, that 80% of the population wants to raise, uh, revenue to compete with that department, then they're like the sheriff. But no one else has done that.
No, for that market. Maybe, I don't know about all the positions, but maybe the deputies that are out on the street versus, I don't know what the cities was. Was it the whole, the whole city?
No, no.
The police department, or was it just the police office?
It's, it's police and fire.
Police and fire, yeah.
Just the office.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it, it could be their staff inside it, but it's, it's-
Jailers, I mean, they obviously don't have that.
Right. But-
I, I understand. I understand the market, you know, that, that's what we have to compete with. And that makes them unique. That makes EMS unique.
A bit, yeah.
Yeah, I want to try to help John. I'm, I'm-
I just think it's mainly with the jailers, right?
No, it's deputies too. I'm, I'm three down in patrol division right now. So, I mean-
But you probably have jailers that would want to move up to that or not? Or they're not qualified?
Sure, they're not get, they, number one, they got to get post-certified, which is about a three-month process. And then once they get, if they pass it, then it's another three months before I can, before they're even human beings, before I can put them on a schedule.
Right.
So-
But, I mean, the ones that are in patrol, that's probably, are not patrol, I'm sorry. Uh, in a jailer, that's not where they want to stay, obviously. They, they probably want to-
But you got to remember, I'm 12 down in the jail too, so, um-
Well, you're going to be 15 now when you move three up to, uh, patrol. So that's what I'm thinking is, you have more entry level that we want to entice and get them here and keep them here so that you can recruit, retain, train, and move them up. And so that's kind of where I'm leaning. And you've got the pot of money, so I guess I'm kind of asking you, do you, is it going to be better served to use them to try to make some salary adjustments or to add another jail detective?
Well, and that's what I said, we could take the jail detective off, but, um-
Uh, I thought you said the train, lieutenant?
No, lieutenant is, I want to keep the lieutenant.
Okay, so detective, the second detective.
So the top, the, I mean, we could keep the top three. If we need to, we can cut the SRO position. That's a 27.
I'm with Jeff there, I think.
I, I want to keep that position too.
I think, no, I think the SRO to me-
But if it comes down to where I don't have enough money, that's, the priorities are right on there. It's the lieutenant, the part-time salary increase and the merit raise, those are the top three.
I mean, I would think the health department employees would think they're unique right now too, with the-
No, they are.
COVID and that too, so I just wanted to put that out there.
They are, they're very unique right now.
I guess I would like to possibly see if you want to change the COLA amount, because I think that will determine the amount of funding remaining for John to decide what he can and cannot do to balance his budget back out.
All right. First, I'd prefer to stay at the 4%. I think it's very reasonable. Uh, we've had, like Debbie mentioned, we've had years where we were over what the state gave, so that's my reasoning for that. My mind can be changed on that. I, I don't, I don't disagree. I'd like to be able to keep up with the state. Uh, but can we, if, if John wanted to go 3% COLA and 1% merit or something, 3% and 2%?
But he, he can't.
If you're doing a COLA, and I think if you ask Jill, she'll have the same opinion. If you're calling it a cost of living, it would have to go the same to all the employees.
And, and I think if you, if you started saying-
It doesn't, no, it doesn't.
Well, let's not-
We don't do it right now, so if it's illegal to do it, we've been breaking law for three years now.
I, I think what they're saying is-
EMS. We haven't done it for EMS.
You have to do it or you don't do it.
You guys adopted that, you guys adopted that plan that they had.
Did we adopt a plan for John?
You adopted the budget.
We adopted law enforcement budget in a different way like we did for EMS.
No, you approved that, uh, grid for EMS.
Right, we do the same thing for John. What's the difference doing it for a department versus an elected official?
And you could, you could, but here, here's the deal.
Wait, wait, I can't.
No, whatever you want up there, I don't care. But here, but here's the deal.
Thank you, John.
I, I don't want to, to lower, uh, I, I want my people to get the same COLA as everybody else. What I'm saying is, you tell me what the COLA you want. I will figure out how much money I have in surplus, and then I will tell you my priorities on what I can and can't do. I, I don't, I, I'm not going to sit up there and say, you got to give me all my stuff, or I'm going to, you know, get mad and storm out. I'm saying I'll work within the budget, but you just got to tell me the numbers you want. I, I believe I can get, I believe, uh, the merit, the money is there for the merit, and I think I can, and I should be able to use the merit.
Okay, so then you're saying what I was basically referring to, I'd rather do is say, here's your pot of money. Are you going to use it for the positions? Are you going to use it for merit, or a mixture thereof?
A mixture thereof.
And, well, and that would be for you to decide, but when you run out money, you run out money.
Absolutely.
But he can't say Joe gets 3% merit, Mary gets 2% merit, 3% COLA. Uh, Sam-
Sam gets this for COLA and that for merit. You can't do that.
And the other thing you remember, Jeff, is COLA.
No, I wasn't saying that. But for the whole sheriff's department, they can do a 4% COLA, 3% COLA, and 1% merit, or whatever.
Well, but here, remember this too. COLA goes to everybody, right? Everybody that's there gets COLA.
No. No. When we do a COLA, EMS does not get a COLA.
No, I'm talking about my department.
Okay. All right, back to your department.
But if you wanna go to EMS, we can talk about EMS. Last year, they, we didn't get as high as increases they did. Because of their step, we got 3%.
Well, it depends on which step they're on.
Yeah, but they still got 5%.
No, no.
Yes, sir.
No, the first year they have a 4.65 or a 5% step, then the second year's a little less, the third year's even less than 3%, I believe. And then fourth.
It's at least 5%.
Well, I mean, we can go, we can argue that, but it's not over.
But what I'm saying is, we got less than what EMS did last year anyway. But I'm okay with that. Because that's what, that's what you guys set up. That's his budget. But with me, when you do a COLA for my department, that means everybody, all 115 employees except for the part-time, they all get that pay raise. Now, on a merit increase, only the people that's been there in the positions for more than 6 months.
And that performed.
So that means those that's been in the positions for less than 6 months getting no merit. They're not eligible.
Sam, what is your thoughts about COLA?
I would like to go at least to 5%. And, you know, if we get a 4, 5 and 1/2, I would, I would be fine with that. But I don't know what that extra half percent would.
Your extra half percent would cost you $74,000. Countywide. Well, other than EMS.
So 224,000.
The total of 1 and 1/2 would be?
70, a little while ago, it was 71, 712, wasn't it?
That, for just his department?
No.
My department's gonna be 58, 875.
Was 74, 328.
Well, it's close enough.
Was a half percent, but the 1 and 1/2?
Was 150.
I had, I wrote down 60,696 for another 1.5%, but then you said, wait a minute, we gotta add taxes.
That was just the sheriff. That was just the law enforcement fund. Your 1 and 1/2 for everyone would cost us the 222, 984.
Okay, so the 4% is costing, for everyone is costing what? Countywide?
With benefits, 594, 625.
Okay.
For me, for the extra 1 and 1/2 percent, would you say it was gonna be?
All right, yeah.
So 1 and 1/2 with benefits, just for the sheriff.
71, I had 71, 712.
71, 712.
So doing 5 and 1/4.
Now, John, that's my idea, because your salary wouldn't be included, and I'm using total. So, yeah, it, this is an estimate based on the total salary in, in that department. There are some circumstances, like John would not be eligible for that COLA.
So are you comfortable approving any more full positions or asked for? And Ann plus her going back and figuring out the 5%?
So I guess I would like to know your priority with COLA, so I can go upstairs and plug that into the budget. And then we can see in the different funds where that puts them overall budget-wise. And then you can possibly decide if there's additional funding for additional employees. But if that's not your priority, then tell me what the priority is.
I guess that's if, which way you wanna go about it. Do you wanna make sure we got that COLA raise in there? And then see what's left for additional employees, or?
That's what I think.
Pick the employees and see what's left for the.
What that COLA is.
Because if we don't, if we don't add any more employees, I don't have near as much heartburn about going to 5% or 5 and 1/2%. If we're gonna be adding all these employees, then I, just we gotta stay at 4%. So we either take care of the ones we got, or we add. It's kinda where I'm at. So, but Sherri, where do you wanna go with that?
I think different funds are gonna end up differently. Some are gonna go a little to the red, some are still gonna be a little in the black. So.
Why don't we just right now make a decision? I, I proposed a 5 and 1/2% COLA. If, if, if I lose, then we've got that out of the way. If I win, we've got that out of the way. So that's my proposal. So we go, we gotta get past the hurdle here to get to the next hurdle. That's, you know, we gotta, we gotta hurdle.
But my vote yes or no is contingent upon whether we add other employees or make other adjustments, kind of, period. So.
Well, you're, you're not talking about the open positions. You're talking about like the lieutenant and the.
I think we take.
SRO.
No, not just, not just sheriff. This is a countywide, countywide in general, not just sheriffs. I'm, I'm off the law enforcement.
I wouldn't tie them, I wouldn't tie them together. Then, then we get, and we, we argue over each additional position as it pops in front of us.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm fine with the 5.5, I'm voting no on any other employees.
Okay.
Or just.
So I have a question about that. So if we go to 5.5, I'm still gonna be about $130,000 in black. So I want that new position on the lieutenant's position, and you're saying no. So that means I am not gonna be able to get that new position, and I'm gonna be $130,000 in the white. I have the money for it.
In a general, in a general discussion, yes. That's where I'm at on it.
But I'm, I'm in favor of you getting the lieutenant. How's that?
Well, I understand that, but that's what I was trying to, I don't.
That's where I'm trying to get, is what that bottom dollar is. And if there's additional funding, then we should add more people.
I mean, I think.
Okay, so go draw the 5 and 1/2 in there.
Well, that's just, like, if, if you all wanna say right now, 5 and 1/2 is the end goal, that's my priority. I want to then take a break and go upstairs and put that 5 and 1/2 in. And come back down and then take a look at the bottom dollar and see what we have remaining.
I mean, the, the 5 and 1/2, ultimately, when we approve or disapprove, the final budget is gonna be where it's at.
Yeah, I think.
So, yeah, no. I, I think we have a direction to go there. Does that work?
So do I have consensus here, 5 and 1/2 is where we're trying to get to?
Yes.
I would like to then break until 1:00 or 1:30 to give me time.
We're only here till 2. Or I guess.
You guys can stay longer.
Okay.
Uh, 1 o'clock?
Debbie?
1, 1:15.
1:15. I'd like to come back and we'll take a look at what those changes did to the budget.
Okay. So I make a motion, we stand in recess until 1:15.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Then we'll be done by 2:15.
I don't know that. I don't have a crystal, won't you?
Yeah.
Just trying to be positive.
I mean, we would all love to be done today, but I don't know that that's gonna happen.
Y'all on HPA tonight?
I got a coach basketball, and Andy's got a softball practice, so. Not a night off. Not a night off.